All right, good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is nine oh five. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Myself and Commissioner Daley are present. Commissioner Beck is out of town, and let's go down the table, have everybody introduce themselves for the record.
Katie Reed, Clerk's Office.
Bob Brooks, Ada County Procurement.
Beth Maun, Treasurer.
Tim Connie, Treasurer's Office.
Bob Carney, Operations.
Alex Murray, Operations.
Jake Jones, Sheriff's Office.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Lieutenant sheet IT.
All right, we have Thomas Ott on the bridge. So we will proceed with the meeting here. Madam Clerk, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
All right. We now move to the unfinished business, and we have two procurement items.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, thanks, Bob.
You're welcome. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, this morning before you are two procurement items. The first is award of bid two three zero two zero, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Vehicle Equipment Purchase, two thousand and twenty-three. And the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for this project and would like to submit this recommendation for a war letter for your consideration.
All right, please do.
The letter is dated February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement. And let me get the right letter here to read. All right, here we go. And after reviewing the bid submitted, it was a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order for bid two three zero two zero to the following vendors and divisions as the lowest responsive bidders. So the first vendor is YP Signal Corporation, and they were awarded the backflip division in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and six dollars and sixty-five cents. They were also awarded the magnetic mic division in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. The next vendor is ERS, Emergency Responders Services Incorporated. They were awarded the Jado Desk Division in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty cents. And they were also awarded the Satina Division in the amount of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty cents. Our next vendor is Dana Safety Supply Incorporated, and they were awarded the Phoenix Division in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. And then finally, our last vendor is Premier Vehicle Installation, and they were awarded the Sound Off Signal Division in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-four cents.
All right.
That are, that is our four vendors, and we recommend that you award those divisions accordingly.
All right, you got all that for a motion?
I do, I do not. Do you?
So the motion, the motion might be that you would accept the evaluation team's recommendation on these awards as listed and read into the record.
Okay. I move to accept the recommendations of the Evaluation Committee Awards, bid twenty-three oh twenty, Ada County Sheriff's Office Vehicle Equipment Purchase, as listed.
Read into the record.
And, and read into the record. In the amount of, that's read into the record as well.
That works. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now we've got the.
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, before we move on to our next item on, on under procurement. With this bid, we also had one division that we had a little bit of confusion on with our bidders. And so we weren't able, not all bidders bid apples to apples. So part of this, part of the harvest division was bid as a package, and some of the bidders separated out the package items that were supposed to be included, and other bidders didn't, so they included it as the package. So there was some confusion on that, so the evaluation team has a recommendation for that particular division as well. If you'd like me to read the record.
Yes, please.
Okay, a letter dated February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two three zero two zero. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted for the, for bid two three zero two zero, the harvest division, it was apparent that there was confusion on the parts and items that were included as part of an overall package for the harvest consoles. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to reject all bids submitted for the harvest division and rebid the harvest division as a separate bid.
Okay, well then, we would probably need a motion on that as well.
Yes, please.
So it's, it's, I move to accept.
Or reject.
Reject the harvest.
Division.
Division, recommendation of the, from the Evaluation Committee for the award of bid number twenty-three twenty, three zero twenty.
And direct us to go out for rebid.
And direct the office to go out for rebid.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thanks, Commissioners.
That's a complicated one, Commissioner Daley.
Sorry for that this morning.
Not a problem, we got it done.
Yes, we did.
And now we still got the turf club, is that right?
Yes, we do. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, our second item before you this morning is the award of bid two three zero two three, the ARPA Expo Idaho Building and Turf Club Roof Replacement, two thousand and twenty-three. And our evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for this project and would like to submit a recommendation for a war letter for your consideration. Letter dated February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two three zero two three. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two three zero two three to Nations Mountain, or excuse me, Nations Roof Mountain LLC as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of two million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, it's expensive roof.
It is. But Bob's been waiting a long time.
I know.
That'd be great to get it replaced.
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid twenty-three oh twenty-three, ARPA Expo Idaho Building and Turf Club Roof Replacement to Nations Roof Mountain.
Yes.
In the amount of two million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Still, I can never get over how much commercial construction costs.
Yeah, it's, it's gone up considerably over the last couple of years, so hopefully we'll stabilize here soon.
All right, thank you. We've got the licenses, new licenses and license transfers. Chair would entertain a motion on that?
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including three new licenses and three license transfers, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We now move to the Clerk's Office.
Yes.
Are you here for the Clerk?
I am. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, we've kind of officially kicked off budget season, so that's where a lot of trans focus will be for the next several months. And in the meantime, we have an election coming up in March that we're still working on. Yeah, that's kind of where our focus is, along with, of course, the financial system, so.
How's the turnout coming for the absentees? Is it pretty low?
It is, so we've sent, I think, a hundred, or we've had about a hundred and thirty-five requests. We've received eight ballots.
Oh, my word.
So, yes.
This is probably going to be pretty, pretty low turnout.
Yes, we're expecting very low turnout.
Yeah. Because I see, there's only one bond on the, on the whole ballot.
Yeah, that's correct, and it only affects Kuna. Yeah, so it's a small turnout, but it's going pretty well.
Good, good. Okay, we will now move on to the Claims Journal. Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the Claims Journal dated February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll now take up the personnel actions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now move on to a report from the Assessor's Office.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Nothing to report for tax cancellations today.
Not a good thing.
Yeah, right? So we're just watching over, seeing what kind of bills are being pushed into the floor over there. So we're just kind of watching everything that's, making sure there's nothing that kind of has a negative impact on our office. So quite a few of them are coming through right now, so we'll be keeping our eyes on that and testifying if we need to.
There's nothing that the legislature's doing that would affect you, right?
I got a whole list of stuff that they're trying to, but I got four pages of stuff. So, yeah, some are, some are pretty good, just like one I saw yesterday that got introduced was, you know, having veterans. Once they qualify, if they're a hundred percent disabled, they don't have to qualify every year. They just stay on the books until they don't qualify. So that's nice, because it's a big inconvenience for our veterans to come down that are disabled and, and have to qualify every, every year, so.
For the veterans' benefit?
Correct, where they're a hundred percent disabled. So, I mean, that's a fantastic bill that's entered, and I hope it goes through and becomes statute. And that would save our office a lot of work and save them a lot of inconvenience. So they do have some good ones, but the majority of them are on the other side of the spectrum.
And that's a hundred percent disabled, right?
Correct.
How many, how many a hundred percent disabled do we have, and did we know in Ada County?
I know last year, I don't know the exact breakdown, but I know of our total PTR last year, we had over four thousand, and I believe around a thousand of those are veterans, but I could give those numbers for you.
So. How much work that would save, which is substantial.
And it would be, it's just a huge inconvenience when they have to come down, and they're just like, why, why do I have to do this every year? And it'll be nice, you know, because, I mean, it's not like they're moving all the time. So typically, once you get, you know, in your home, you're, you're there on average for seven to ten years, so it doesn't make a lot of sense. And it's not like they go from being a hundred percent disabled to something less. I mean, you know, so it just, it'll be nice if this passes, so.
Hopefully it does, yeah.
Yeah, so those are the good bills, so.
And Seth and the Association is helping us keep track of these bills that would, in fact, cause an impact on the Assessor's Office, correct?
Yeah, so it's a little disjointed now. We used to have Seth, who worked with Bob McQuade, and then, so it kind of, some of our chains of, you know, stuff, the way it routed before, has been kind of broken off without having Bob in there, and Rebecca's, you know, trying to get in there. But some, you know, we have Lorna Jorgensen, she passes information along, and then we have some of the tax commission that basically does a summary of everything that we get.
Right.
Seth, but actually, this, this session, we haven't had any contact with Seth that I'm aware of, so.
Because I guess the important thing, having been a legislator, sometimes they don't realize the full impact of some of the stuff they're doing. Sounds good on the surface, but they don't realize the impact of, at the local level, so that's why.
True.
It would be useful for us to have that conduit to them, so they, oh, by the way, if you just tweak the bill just this way, it would be really helpful for the counties.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I know last year, we didn't testify on one of the bills that we don't like this being proposed again this year. And we come in kind of late to the game and sent a letter to the governor, and it did get vetoed. But that bill's in front of us again this year. Like to get started, started earlier, you know, at the ability to testify instead of coming in, you know, at the very end of the game, right before it becomes law, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
But yeah, it's, it's interesting. I mean, we, I'm sure we'll get our network back in shape pretty soon. I know Rebecca's pretty active in making sure she's got connectivity with everyone, so we'll get back in the game, so. But it's definitely educational over there. It's a whole different ballgame.
Well, and we have over half of the legislators knew they've never been in the legislature before, so they don't, they don't even understand some of those nuances either, so.
True.
It's helpful to educate them.
Yeah, yeah. So that'll be keeping us busy for the next couple of weeks, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Welcome.
We'll move on now to the Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Commissioner.
Morning.
As noted, there were no tax cancellations. You know, every time I pull up the agenda, it's the first thing I look at, just to help figure out our workload for the week. So pleased to see that there is none today. But our report is the January investment report. So that, hand it over to Tim.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
You all need a copy of this?
Yeah.
Thank you. Here you go. So we're looking at the portfolio, Ada County's portfolio for January, and we didn't have any maturities, none of our bonds or any of our securities matured. We didn't make any new purchases in January. However, the big change was the L-Gip, because we had the influx of tax revenue that came into the county. So if you compare this to last month's, the overall book value of the investment, that's probably the best thing to look at, to see the change month over month, it's up about eighty-nine million dollars. And we had estimated, I think we talked about it last month, the county was going to get around ninety million, so that's right in line with what we expected. So that was the big change. Fortunately, that money going over to the local government investment pool, the yield over there is pretty nice right now, because the Fed raising the interest rates and most of the investments there at, at L-Gip with the State Treasurer's Office is invested in the shorter term type securities. So that was the big change there. Today, the Consumer Price Index came out. It was a little bit higher than what they expected. It came out at six point four percent, so it's sort of a mixed bag. It's trending down. December's was six point five year over year, so it's kind of heading in the right direction. But what this means, I think the way the market is interpreting it right now, is that the Fed will probably likely raise again in March, probably twenty-five basis points. Of course, the Fed is data-driven, and they're going to keep monitoring, but that's kind of what the market's telling us right now. Other than that, there's no real big changes in our portfolio.
I was just going to ask you, the market, what, what the estimate of the Fed was going to do.
Yeah, that's what the market's thinking right now, twenty-five basis point increase. So we'll see, nobody really knows, and maybe they don't even know, they just can change their opinion based on.
Because February still isn't over yet either, so. When, when do the figures come out for the inflation rate for February? Is that before the, before the Fed meets?
You know what? I don't know. They tend to come out, it seems like, at different times roughly, just like the meetings of the Fed. And so I just kind of watch that stuff from day to day, and I hear about it a couple of weeks prior, and I'm not sure what it is for March. It's possible they could get those numbers, but they're monitoring. They've got so many economists on staff, thousands of them probably, and they're monitoring that day to daily. So just, it's, it's very interesting to me to watch that and how it affects individuals and, and everything in the economy is so affected by it. It's really astounding, and so it's important to monitor that, I think.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tim. Thank you, Beth. All right, we'll take up now the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move on now to weed and pest. We've got a lean there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to approve one release of lean for weed and pest as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now moving on to Expo Idaho, we have four interim events.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the four interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Move on now to parks and waterways. We have five Barber Park Education and Event Center events.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the six Barber, Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chairman to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now move on to our agreements. Is there anybody to speak on any agreements today?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the thirteen agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now we've got our indigent services item.
I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and authorize, authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And if there's nothing else, we'll be in recess.
You are on the record.
All right, good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, time is nine twenty-five AM. We're here for the Board of Ada County Emergency Medical Services District. Myself and Commissioner Daley are present. Commissioner Beck is absent, and we have on the bridge Sean Rain. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
All right, we can move on to the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of the claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I'll take up the personnel actions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the personnel action as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll now take up two agreements. Sean, did you have anything to say on those?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley, good morning. These are actually, it's a new contract with a billing service. We, with the pandemic and the increase in call volume, billing office has gotten behind about nine thousand calls. And so the plan is to, to outsource half of our, our bills to this company to get caught up and then evaluate at the end of that contract whether we want to continue with that as an ongoing service.
All right, so that's, that's both agreements?
Yeah, the first agreement is the actual agreement with them, and then with HIPAA, we always have to have a business associate agreement that goes in hand with that.
Okay. Tom, did you have any questions?
I have no, how did you identify the, the billing people?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley, we actually went through an RFP process late last year, and this was the, the company that was selected through that process.
Thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion then.
I move to approve the two agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now to the EMS update.
Yes, good morning, once again. You know, our COVID numbers are staying pretty steady. They're three point nine this morning. I expect a little bit of fluctuation up and down, but kind of staying in the, the green, if you will, in, in regards to COVID. Outside of that, our SCR down at the State House is, is waiting for its hearing in health and welfare right now. So I'll be watching those agendas, be able to go down and testify once that hits committee. So with that, I would stand for any other questions. That's really all I had for today.
You have a, is there a coordinated effort to get people to testify?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the plan is to have as many people as we can, you know, it's, it's kind of tough because those agendas come out kind of the, the evening before, so I don't know that we're going to be able to get people from all around the state. They do have a bridge much like this where people can hop on and testify, so we'll probably get a few people from there. But certainly from around the kind of southwest Idaho, we'll get folks in testifying committee.
Do, do we have a, Mr. Chair, do we have a feel for what the legislature's thinking at this point in time? Is there a lot, is there a lot negative or positive?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley, at this point in time, there's not a lot of negative. It did get a, a negative three vote from IFF, just due to their, their take on it being expanded government, county control, and increase in involvement from the state in what they believe could be just a, a local process. But outside of that, it's generally got a lot of support. I think the idea was the sender, Harris, wanted to send it back through a committee instead of just taking it directly to the floor to be able to get that testimony in committee and, and get it on the record.
Is there, is there any contact with IFF that may, they may have scored it based on either misunderstanding or misinformation or something? Is there any contact with them that might have changed their rating?
Yeah, Commissioner Daley, I, I, you know, I'm not exactly sure. I will certainly check with Sarah Westbrook with the Association of Counties, and then the lobbyists with the Association of, the Idaho Association of Fire Chiefs to see if they've spoken with any of those legislators to get a feel for what, what exactly that is.
Because sometimes I've found, when I was there, that if the discussion was held, they're, they, they have even changed their, their rating, IFF, I mean, based on additional information that they didn't have when they did their original, original rating. So I didn't know if that contact had been made, because I think that might be part of the case. Their increase in government is, might be, they might, might misunderstand what that, what the thing is, what we're actually doing or trying to do, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Daley, that's a good point, because one of their concerns was, you know, we do have some private ambulance services in the state, and they felt like that would be removing the ability for a private service to function, and that's just, that's inaccurate. You know, a county could choose to contract with a private ambulance service, much like they do with some of the not-for-profits up in middle and northern Idaho. So that can still be done, it doesn't really change the ability for the services to operate.
So this bill just declares EMS a essential service? Does it do anything by itself as far as changing anything?
No, Mr. Chair, it's literally, it's just a resolution, so it does, it has that declaration of making or EMS being an essential service, but then it really sets out the steps that we want to accomplish for the rest of this session and, you know, over the summer and into next session in, in two thousand and twenty-four.
Because it, it seems to me, I guess that's why I was asking if the IFF had been, if, if anybody had been able to sit down with them and actually visit with them, because it seems like this is actually right in line with their philosophy of not, not increasing government, but actually accentuating the need for, especially with federal lands and some of those other issues that they're, they're really working on. This accentuates some of those things that are important to, to their issues that they, that they, that they actually espouse. So that, that's why I asked that question, but.
Okay, appreciate that.
All right.
I think we have the minutes too.
Did we do, we missed the minutes?
We didn't do the minutes, and I think I did make a motion, Beck.
You sure? Did we do the, get the minutes, Annie?
We haven't done it yet.
We missed it, okay.
Yeah, Tim closer.
Jumped over it. All right, was there anything else, Sean?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, well then, if there's nothing else, we will be in recess.